6:22 PM. Roman 9, C1. Approval of the 2018-19 Superintendent Evaluation Goals and Instrument and Adoption of Board Procedure 1630 BP. This passed the Executive Committee, August 27th, for approval. Motion, please.
I move the School Board approve the 2018-19 Superintendent Goals and Evaluation Instrument and adopt the Board Procedure Number 1630 BP, Evaluation of the Superintendent, as attached to the Board Action Report.
I second the motion. We discussed this at some length during intro. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues, please. Director Burke?
Just a couple of clarifying points that the work the Superintendent is doing right now around the Listen, Learn, and Learn Tour is a component of that, and I want to thank her for that, as is the Board Retreat around Board Superintendent Collaboration, which is sort of a joint work process, so appreciate that.
Director DeWolfe, please.
I'm very excited, and I just wanted to make a moment to share something. Recently, I had asked Superintendent Juno to attend something with me, and I really appreciated your candor in, as long as the time permits and it's within my plan, I want to make sure I'm prioritizing that, so just really appreciated making sure that this work was prioritized, and so grateful for that.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Superintendent Juno, did you wish to say anything on this, given the fact that this is the roadmap of your life?
Wow, my life, my work life. Yeah, so I just want to thank the Board for all the effort that went into this. I mean, the Exec Committee, when we met, I think, did some fantastic work, and we had some good conversation around it about what that should look like, given it's a truncated year and things like that. I think there's some really good things in there, and as you guys have pointed out, the Listen and Learn Tour is really, the entry plan completion is a big part of that, as well as the Board Retreat we had around Board Superintendent sort of collaboration and how that's going to work. So I appreciate all of your efforts in helping to move this evaluation along as well. You'll also hear more, and I know that we will be intimately involved with the strategic plan as it moves forward, which is the other component of the evaluation. And so I just appreciate the Board's input into all that and the work with me as we move that forward and look forward to our continued collaboration. So thank you so much.
We are a lot of things, but we are never boring. Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu? Oh, sorry. Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
I say a round of applause for this one. Number two, Annual Approval of Schools, per Washington Administrative Code 180-16-220. This came before CNI, August 21st, for...
Consideration.
Motion, please, kind sir.
I move that the School Board approve each school within the district as listed, having a school improvement plan that is data-driven, promotes a positive impact on school learning, and includes a continuous improvement process pursuant to WAC 180-16-220.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director DeWolfe?
Thank you, President Harris. So, kind of just in light of, obviously, today and the last week and a half's experience with the Washington Middle School, I think just understanding what is the accountability structure or feedback loop that this process will be going through, given some concerns about maybe some lack of fidelity between what's being lived and what is in the CSIP.
Chief Storoski, did you want to take that?
It looks like it.
Did you get a short straw?
Yes, Mike Storoski, Chief of Schools. So Director DeWolfe, are you asking about specifically a specific school, or are you asking about schools in general?
I think at system level, just thinking about what's the process for schools, whether it's throughout the next school year, or just if there's inconsistency, what's our check and measure on that?
Yeah, so the good thing about the CSIP process is it's ongoing, and so in the fall, there'll be convening for principals and staffs to get together to see about what they planned in last spring, late winter, early spring, if that's still consistent, if that's still where they're going. They might have new data that they need to change or adjust, and we put those CSIPS online so that they can be adjusted as long as they go through the building leadership teams. So it's ongoing throughout the year. What we are doing tonight, and the process is just saying, when they were due on July 1st, that they had met all of our initial qualifications, our consistency, and that they are ready to go.
Just a follow-up. Particularly, I guess, do we have a process for if a school has one school leader during one school year, and then over the summer, there's a change, and I think part of that is just kind of that switch over in leadership?
Yeah, so it's a big issue, and a consistent one, and that's why we revisited in the fall, because if you look at this year, we have 21 new principals in new schools this year who are inheriting a school CSIP from the previous staff, the previous principal, or the previous leadership, that they need to be aware of, but also to make sure that it's consistent with what the school is going to continue to do for this following school year. So it's really important for new leaders to be able to know what's going on, specifically our new ones, because they are inheriting whatever the leadership from the previous principal chose to get through.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Burke?
Can I piggyback on that? Because I really want to celebrate what you just described. We're trying to develop policy that helps our system be better, that helps our schools be better, helps us provide better services to students, and one of the things that's built-in inherent in the educational system is disruption. Kids go grade to grade, they go school to school. We have a funding model where we don't get to make decisions until we may not have a budget from the state. So there's a lot of elements, you know, principals move around, teachers move around. There's a lot of elements in the system that are really, like, structurally disruptive. And the CSIP as a vehicle to help kind of balance that out, it does provide a roadmap for principals coming in, but at the same time, unlike in past years, it's a living document, so the principals can work through their building leadership teams with their communities to implement changes and get their vision on it and get their stamp. And so I think it doesn't preclude them from doing that, but it also helps stabilize things from rapid changes.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack?
I just want to briefly speak again to my gratitude around adding the OSPI numbers and the addresses to help clarify where our schools are and which schools we're talking about. I just want to say that again, and looking forward to that happening in other lists that we do.
Director Pinkham?
Yeah, I think definitely, as we're seeing here with the Washington middle school parents, that consistency, if the CSIPS can help guide that, and what role does a BLT have in that, what role does a community have in that, what role, you know, each one has, because I had one community member email me where, yes, they know that their building's losing a principal, but they also have to be losing their vice principal as well, so that, what kind of mechanisms do we have in place that will help with that transition versus just, oop, here's a new principal, have at it, you know? We have their executive directors to let, you know, their roles be known, so that our community knows, yes, we're being addressed, we're not just throwing someone in there to have at the wolves, get at them.
Yeah, and I'd say one of the things that we're, Superintendent Juno referred to at the beginning, was our lead-up program, which has principal leadership coaches, executive directors of schools, people within our department, to be able to help support people who are either new to being in the principal role, or people who are new to being in the principal role in Seattle Public Schools. So we definitely have processes in place for supports for people who are new to the role or new to a building.
Thank you, so let's, you know, celebrate those kind of transitions that we do have.
Director Geary, please.
I'm really curious, in terms of the CSIPS, about the reporting of the fundraising that goes on, and I'm trying to look up where that lives in terms of being able to verify it online. What are the requirements in the CSIPS around that kind of reporting?
So the specifics around that, what we put in and report to OSPI are around our grants and title dollars that are coming into school buildings, and how they're using and utilizing district funds, is what you'll see there. If they're using it for positions from outside sources, we have to name that within the fund. So I don't know if you would see that exactly directly related in our CSIP plans about how, if you're asking like a PTSA funding a specific position, I don't think you would find that. What we're looking at specifically and are required to do in our CSIPS is report title and state dollars and grants that are coming into buildings from, like, the city of Seattle and such.
Okay, that's a topic that I'd like to learn more about and understand better at some point. Thank you.
Last but not least, I'll take the T F from Director Geary. We may not require it in our CSIPS, but I guess the bigger question is, should we? In terms of transparency and dark money, when I say dark money, I mean foundations, I mean PTSAs that we have no control over whatsoever, but it really comes down to being an equity issue in my heart and soul. And those folks that have been around a while can remember me at that dais, having spent three days of my life cross-referencing it, highlighting it, the missing pieces of that extra money. I think we should be transparent about the money that is going to support our schools, and I hope we are brave enough to take that on, because it is, what is your phrase, a hairball? It's a hairball. But we ought not be balancing our budgets on the back of at least $3.6 million of PTSA funds, and that's not counting athletics and orchestra and bands, foundations and school foundations. It's embarrassing, and it's very troubling to me. I like the CSIPS, because now these board directors have an accountability mechanism where we absolutely have the right to ask the nasty questions. What about, what about, what about? And that's as clear as it gets. And the progress we've made in the last five years on the CSIPS is extraordinary, so whoever says we don't change, game on. I'm at your service. I'd be more than happy to argue that one with you till the end of time. With that, roll call, please.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Mack? Director DeWolfe? Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
With pleasure, aye.
This motion has passed with a vote of five to zero to one.
Number three, Revised Board Policy 2151, Interscholastic Activities. This came before OPS, August 22nd, for... Motion, please.
I move that the School Board amend Board Policy Number 2151 as attached to the Board Action Report.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? And I see Associate Superintendent Flip Herndon stepping to the podium for questions if we have them. Director Mack?
Yeah, if I could, if I could, Dr. Herndon sent us an email earlier today that kind of explained the core issue that was of concern here, why it was consideration around why this is important, that we need to take action in terms of some action to be a part of the WIAA. That can happen here in this policy, or it could happen a different way. So can you share that again and get us all on the same page, because I'm not sure that I completely understood it all?
Sure, so in the past, this particular policy had language in it, which has been resubmitted, that stated that Seattle Public School, High Schools were members of the WIAA. Every year, we have to sign something, the Board President, the Superintendent basically signs a form to the WIAA saying, "We're still members." That allows our teams to participate in interscholastic sports, go to the postseason, all those kinds of things, abide by the rules of participation. A few years ago, this particular policy, that language was taken out, so for the past few years, the signature has been happening by the Board President and Superintendent, but legal counsel wanted to make sure that that was something that everybody should know about, which is why we reinserted that particular language. Why it was dropped, I don't think it was dropped for any other particular reason than probably just oversight, if I were to guess. And again, I don't know the history, so maybe I shouldn't even venture a guess, but given the way our policy goes, it may have been movement from a letter policy to a number policy, but I'm not 100% sure. That's how I could see that language possibly dropping.
Director Geary, please.
Thank you as well for your email with regard to the issue that I raised last time about this focusing just on those athletic activities that are recognized by the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association. And I do understand that that is what this particular policy is addressing. It did give me an opportunity to realize that we don't have an athletics policy generally, and so that is, I guess, in part where my confusion comes, because when you only have one policy addressing athletics, and it's only about WIAA athletics, it seems to me that there is a gap that I would ask that we examine, have some conversations around, and attempt to fill.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number four, 2018-19 City of Seattle Contract to Expand the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program. This came before Audit and Finance?
For approval.
September 10th. And who can be against fresh fruit and vegetables? This is going to be fun. Motion, please, kind sir.
I move that the School Board authorize the Superintendent to accept the City of Seattle funds in the amount of $350,150 to expand the district's fresh fruit and vegetable program in 19 high-poverty elementary schools, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the Superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract.
I might add, this is an item for intro and action because of contract timing. Director Geary?
I second the motion.
Oh, busted. Well done. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director DeWolfe, then Director Mack?
I'm really excited about this, and just wanted to share gratitude with our partners at the city for, while a fairly controversial tax, grateful that it will be benefiting our students, so thank you for that.
Can you share with us the timeline for this grant? Is it going to be happening every year, or is this, I mean, is it a one-time thing? And how long do we get this? This is coming from the sugary tax, tax dollars.
The city's, yes.
The city's sugar-free sweetened beverage, sorry.
There you go. So for us, you know that we receive funding from the federal government to fund this program, and it funds six schools this last year, and that's an annual program that we've seen for a number of years. This is a new grant from the city, and I think it does depend on the amount of revenues that they are collecting and how they choose to spend those revenues. They brought together a community group that recommended that they use the funding this way, so we'll look to it every year, and hopefully, we will be able to get it earlier. We are supposed to start this program the first day of school, however, it took a little while to get the contract going, and so that's why the October 1st deadline was what they gave us.
Director Mack, and then Director DeWolfe?
Can you also talk a little bit about the sustainability efforts with this program in terms of the food sharing and composting and all of that, because I think that's a good thing to know that we are really focused on in Seattle Public Schools?
So we've been working with the resource conservation specialists, and one of the things that we do have at our schools is shared tables. Because this actually goes into the classroom also, we're working with them to make sure that we have shared classroom tables or have a way to manage this, because one of the unique things about this program is we are offering different and unique fruits and vegetables that sometimes students have never tasted at all. They'll have one bite of it, and they'll never want it again, and yet it will be there. So we're going to try and figure out how do we make sure that we don't have food waste and that we can provide, if it's untouched, now, we don't want it to come back to the shared table if they took a bite, but if it's untouched, that we would be able to share it with other students.
My question was just clarification, so on the bar, it says, "Expanding access," and it'll be at 19 Seattle Public Schools. Is that 19 minus six from the federal, so it would technically be 25 total?
It'll be 25 of our schools that are all greater than 50% free and reduced.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Burke?
I, in reading through this, I'm surprised or didn't realize, and am happy, that this is not during meal service periods, this is a snack in the scope of work Appendix A, provide fresh fruits and vegetables to all students daily at times other than at meal service periods. So I hadn't realized that. Is that built into, like, the schools have a way to deploy in the classrooms?
Yeah, and that was part of when we were rolling this out originally to the six schools. We had to work through processes for what would that look like, how do teachers use that? It's also been a teaching venue for them, and again, although it's offered in the classroom, when there's extras, it does come back into the general cafeteria.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number five, Motion to Introduce and Approve a Memorandum of Understanding Regarding the 2018-19 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Seattle Public Schools and Seattle Education Association, SEA, Certificated Non-Supervisory Employees, Paraprofessional Employees, and Seattle Association of Educational Office Employees. This came before Executive Committee, September 13th, for consideration. Motion, please.
I move that the School Board approve the summary of new provisions for the 2018-19 Collective Bargaining Agreement in the form of a memorandum of understanding attached to the School Board Action Report. The MOU authorizes implementation of the 2018-19 salary increases by October 1st, 2018. Immediate action is in the best interests of the district.
I might add that this item is for intro. I did it again.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item is for intro and action, and we've updated materials yesterday, September 17. Cheryl?
Yes.
Take it away.
Thank you.
And again, props.
Thanks. So Cheryl Anderson Moore, I'm Chief Negotiator for Seattle Public Schools, and I'm pleased with President Harris and members of the Board, and Superintendent Juno, and members of our public. We are incredibly pleased, as a joint bargaining team, to bring forward the motion to approve both two things. One, action for the salary schedules for the SEA bargaining unit, which includes the certificated staff members, the SEOP staff members, and their paraprofessionals. That's the motion for introduction and action tonight in order to meet the pay warrant for October 1 payroll. In addition, we're bringing to you an overview of the summary of the major terms of the collective bargain agreement. As we shared last week at Exec, the collective bargain agreement is under major construction and overhaul. We have a joint committee that's working on it, and we hope to have it back to the Board for formal approval. And we're estimating no later than October 31, but we'd like to get it done by mid-October, so that work is underway. So with that, so before we hopefully go forward on that, just give you a really quick summary, and I've been lectured several times by my favorite boss, Mr. Nielsen, to do this really quickly, because we're in a kind of a tight timeline tonight. So we have posted the PowerPoint with the overall terms of the agreement for you to review, and we shared this with principals this morning, so we went through the objectives this morning around the bargaining process and highlights of the tentative agreement, financial impacts, which fabulous CFO, Jolynn Burge, will talk about, and then communication and getting ready for the next bargaining agreement. As we shared with you, this is a one-year agreement. The first five slides deal with the process itself, and I won't walk through the details on that, but please know, we had a team of about 45 people, 35, actually 50, 35 people from SEA who represented the teachers, parapros, and office folks, and 15 of our fabulous team members, including principals and central office, that worked together since basically May 24th, almost nonstop, except for a few weeks in July, to bring to you now this tentative agreement. Prior to that, we had some subgroups working to sort of get the content-rich work going underway to bring forward to the main bargaining team. 170 hours in session together. We survived a strike authorization vote on August 28th, however, we got right back into bargaining in the morning of August 29th, and were able to bring the tentative agreement together on Friday evening on August 31. SEA ratified the contract on September 8th, and I'll just note for the record that the paraprofessional group voted in support at 90% in favor of the agreement, the SEOP group supported 97% in favor of the group, and the certificated staff voted 83% in favor of the tentative agreement. So given such a political tough year with the strikes around us and sort of external pressures, I just want to applaud the team. I think they did an awesome job in bringing this back to their group. Yep. Yay! And as I shared, we're bringing forward the salary schedules tonight and full contract later. So a moment of congratulations to our team. We just have to take a moment, and that's Friday night, 9:35 PM, with our full bargaining team together. And we're hanging on to each other with joy and tears, and actually, we miss each other, so we pass each other here out in the field, or here in the center, and go, "Oh, my gosh, I missed you. We've spent so much time together. How are you?" So I hate to say it, we can hardly wait to get back together again and start the process. So congratulations to that team, and just another quick one. Catherine Brown took these pictures, and I just adore one. Look at this one, a Shelley Hurley. So their green cards and yellow cards are a way of developing consensus. We'd shared with the Board our interest-based process about how we present options to our -- interest-based process about how we present options to ourselves, our team, and then wino through. A green card is good to go, a yellow card is eh, can live with it, and a red card is no way. So we worked a consensus and did that with, for the hundred and seventy hours together to bring this tentative agreement. So I won't go over the details and compensation. They've been posted, and we reviewed it last week in Exec, so you can see the details there. And just wanna point out that right now, our certificated salary for eighteen-nineteen will exceed Lake Washington and Bellevue School District. That was our target in negotiations. We're holding other, some other things like stipends and extra time flat for the seventeen-eighteen. Our, our classified salaries will continue to be the highest in the state. In addition, our rates for substitutes will be the highest in the state, so we hope that we continue to recruit and retain high-quality classified folks and substitutes, of course, with our educators, as we get to go do our work for next year. I just wanted to show the principals what the attestation form looks like for the technology. A new item that we are really quite proud of and is a bit innovative, I think we're the first school district in this state to add an additional five days of paid parental leave to our employees who become new parents for a whole host of reasons. It's not part of sick leave. This is a specific leave that is targeted to support parents in those early couple of days, and whether it's birth, or foster care, or emergency, or however it comes out, to help them in the transition for caring for children. So we are very excited about that. We'll be monitoring it from Human Resources, and we'll be able to report back to you in a year how that's working out. Counselors and nurses, we'd shared with you previously, we enhanced some ratios in those areas. And in the counseling arena, not for tonight's discussion, there's a tremendous energy around what we can do for our social, emotional supports for, for our students. So that will continue to spill into our work next year, and you know, I'm sure you'll see proposals from us coming next year in that regard. Special education, couple of things in terms of cleaning up some-
You skipped nurses. Can you go back to that?
Sure.
That's awfully important to a lot of folks.
You bet. So for nurses, we added a five-point-zero FTE to the total nursing pool, so that's additional staff. In, in addition to that, we added some extra days for health, for health planning work in, prior to school. So that pool was increased from three days per site to five days per site. Those days are distributed basically through their partnership learning team based on need of the school and the needs of the students. Special education, a couple of things where we're beefing up our compliance around our IEPs and our stipends, and also increase the stipend doing, to improve hopefully our recruitment and retention for our special ed. We still continue to have a shortage of special ed certificated teachers, so we're trying to be as competitive as we can with our neighboring school districts. This is a reasonable start forward on the stipend, but in addition, we tied, tied significant compliance to that stipend. One of the things to the, for second and third bullet are particularly important. We wanted to be careful with our principals, that they're being very thoughtful about when they're pulling special ed IAs. They all, we all have general duty supervision responsibilities, but we wanna thoughtful and careful about it and not pull them too significantly from their classrooms. So we're in dialogue with principals to help coach them up on that and helping them with some of the staffing in the classified arena. Probably the most significant step forward in the special ed arena had to do with our philosophy about trying to work our, especially our certificated and classified staffing in a thoughtful manner, not so much ratio-based by the name of the class or the program, which is in the contract now, but more from a student-based needs through the IEPs. This is a significant lift that was jointly agreed to by SCA and by SPS, but I just wanna share with you, this will be slow work and careful work, because we don't wanna wholesale the work that's already in the collective bargaining agreement that's there. That's there for a reason, but we wanna move forward in a way of being much more careful about looking at the needs of the student through the IEP, to be careful about how we're assigning that staff. So we, we worked with principals on this this morning, and we'll continue to work with them. And again, I'm looking forward to reporting back to you next spring on some, how those efforts have worked out this past year, this coming year. Couple of things in terms of want to create an itinerant special ed pool for our paraeducators, or pool of special ed paraeducators who are specially trained, who can dip into exceptionally difficult assignments and give a hand in that arena. This, this is actually going to be aligned with a future program we'd like to get going called a Behavior Tech. There's something called a Certified Behavior Tech Program, and this, this highly-trained group, especially the paras, we hope will lead into a future plan for, for more Behavior Tech supports. And our last bullet there has to do with a memorandum of understanding to help us wade our way through what's called the Secondary Service Model Two classes, where there's a wide continuum of needs at the secondary level that might drive different, different degrees of staffing. So we have an MOU to help us work through the process on that. Throughout the entire tentative agreement, you'll find comments about professional development. There's a tremendous need for professional development in so many segments of our, of our, of our system. You'll see it in the area for substitutes, you'll see it in special education, and you'll see it in general ed. So we are working really hard to start beefing up how do we get more people to attend our excellent professional development? Attendance is an issue. We offer great stuff, but getting them there is an issue. So we're trying to think about more ways to deploy either in the building or by region, to get out in the field, to our buildings, to, to have, basically push our professional development. So we have a number of subcommittees working on that right now and looking forward to pushing that along. We've dedicated some funds, both in the classified and certificated arena, to help us in professional development. Racial equity, substantial steps there. If we had more time, we could be here for another hour bragging about this one, but just to know for tonight, we're adding ten additional race and equity teams, asking that for any, where a school has a race and equity team, make sure that we have one member on the BLT. Made some changes with some of our funding over an old type of stipend, coming out of the old no child left behind times. That's called the Level One Stipends. Those funds will, will help be repurposed to putting some research into how to support our highest schools and needs. We spent some time this morning with our principals on what did that mean in terms of looking at models from community schools, flight schools, some things we've done in the past that had some major successes to them, and want to see what we can do to reignite and, and basically refresh those efforts. Again, more PD, and especially in the area of explicit and implicit bias. I'm gonna brag a whole lot about one of our early release days. Clover, Dr. Cod, was the leader, leader on this, this conversation in our early release Wednesdays, where we have currently eight days that are dead eight, they're called Green Days right now on our calendar. And it's, that's teacher-driven time. And as we were changing the focus of that Green Day, the entire team melded around the concepts of working on student data, student data around disproportionality and efforts to close the gap. While there might have been some efforts at one point to dilute some of that time, the entire team banded together and said, "Nope, we want all eight of those Green Days focused on teacher-driven efforts for disproportion, at looking at disproportionality." So that is a particularly exciting, again, we could brag about this for an hour, but particularly exciting step for, for, for our teachers. Walked the principals through our calendars, walked them through some details in early release, developing FAQs. We've talked in prior times quite a bit about the new PG, Professional Growth and Educator Supports and the Peer Assistance Panel. That was well-adopted by the, the agreement. There won't be much in the actual collective bargaining agreement. Much of that work is embodied, will be in guidelines, handbooks, the program itself, so, but there will be a few pieces that have to be in the, in the bargaining agreement. Had some clarifications on student supervision. And in the HR arena, we are working, and there's a policy that is, is that, it's up for tonight, I think, isn't it, for the, yeah, different policy, okay. Policy coming up on some, some suggested changes in, for, for the, for transfers, and then also for release of contract. And again, more professional growth. The area of substitutes, we've been able to move up some thresholds to have our substitutes who work for us in longer-term assignments be eligible for healthcare at earlier thresholds. Made some progress on this for senior subs, being who can still pick positions but open them up earlier, so we're able to make sure that we have full access for all of our subs to pick up positions. And then hiring teams have the option to request, if they have a rock star substitute that they wanna interview, they can involve them in the phase one hiring a little bit earlier. Yeah. So with that, I'm gonna turn to financial impacts and turn this over to fabulous CFO Jolynn. And by the way, I bragged about this last week. Jolynn gets standing ovations at our bargaining team members for her transparent, clear, and thoughtful work on finances. So we would not be here today without her fabulous work, so.
Good evening. Jolynn Bergy, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance. This slide, I just have two slides. This slide shows the bargaining group, the cost in the eighteen-nineteen school year, and then the ongoing cost that we'll be incurring for nineteen-twenty. The other bargaining items, the other cost item, it's about five-point-five million dollars. As Cheryl was talking about, things that we've done in the contract, changes that we've made for counselors, nurses, substitutes, special education, all of those things brought together, the paid leave, were about five-point-five million dollars. So total cost of the bargain for us in eighteen-nineteen, fifty-seven-point-six million dollars, of which about nine million dollars will be funded by the capital fund. That represents the four days of technology. That's part of the certificated salary schedule. So the net cost of the general fund is about forty-eight-point-eight million dollars in eighteen-nineteen. Last slide. This just shows an updated outlook. So we have a four-year outlook that's now required by law. This outlook shows that in eighteen-nineteen, we have a surplus remaining of about eleven million dollars. It shows that our expenditures will outpace our revenues by about seventy-eight million dollars in eighteen-nineteen. After we close the year for seventeen-eighteen, we're probably looking somewhere in the neighborhood of about a fifty-million, fifty-million-dollar deficit. That we'll be working with the board as we start budget development. We'll be starting that work right away, both under the leadership of the superintendent and with the board. We'll have monthly work sessions. We've been through this process together before. This is hard. It impacts our schools and our families, but it's something that we know how to do. We know how to prioritize, and we know how to budget towards our goals. So we'll have that work ahead of us throughout this next year. With that, I'll just say that we will start, it's a one-year agreement. I think a lot of questions remain as to what the legislature may or may not do in the upcoming session. That definitely will impact where we end up in nineteen-twenty, and so we'll be starting those conversations with SCA and our labor partners again soon. And that would conclude my comments.
Questions, comments, concerns? Director Mack.
Yeah, I just had a clarifying question a couple slides back. The one before. You're showing here that eighteen-nineteen costs, which is this year, and this is a one-year contract, so then the projection for the nineteen-twenty is assuming the same contracts, but that contract isn't yet in place and we're gonna start working on it?
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand, because there's a projection there, and this contract's one year through eighteen-nineteen. That projection is kind of based on keeping the same contract that just is here?
Yes, it would be unrealistic to think that something would be changing in nineteen-twenty, while that is yet to come. This is our best estimate for those costs.
Thank you for that clarification.
Director Burke?
Clarification on the clarification. For the multi-year projection, is it a, a flat extension, or does it include a COLA component for the salary?
Beginning in twenty, beginning in twenty-twenty-one, there's a footnote at the top that says that staffing, there's a three percent inflator that is put on those expenditures starting in twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. And then I, I have a question for Cheryl regarding the, the form of the CBA and, I guess the first one, do you anticipate it being bigger or smaller in volume than the previous one?
Same size.
Same size. Some of the things that you described around, you know, just like the details of implementation, you mentioned those were gonna be in, in handbooks or other things. Are those then, by referencing them by CBA, do they become officially approved governance documents? I know this is kind of a wonky question, but what's the, what's the lines of, of approval and formality behind those things?
So, so for example, good question. So for example, let's say in special education. There's a whole program, special education services, that are driven through the department, through its goals, the plans that they would bring forward. And while I'm not immediately familiar with them here in Seattle, that would be an example of a program that has its own director, reports to the superintendent, the board. You're brought up to date from time to time on what special ed is doing. In the context of what special ed is doing for its services across, across the district, there are certain components of those programs that have been worked into the collective bargaining agreement that directly impacted wages, hours, and working conditions. So one can have a narrow view on that, or one can have an expansive view of that. In, currently, in the Seattle Public Schools, we have a moderate view of what, of what is in the contract for special education. From a purist perspective, I would ask, say that some of those things should come out of the collective bargaining agreement, 'cause they're more policy-driven, but they're in the contract now. So then you have to ask the question about, is it worth negotiating that out of the contract or to leave it alone? There's a whole body of labor law that walks with when you pull something out of the contract versus when you leave it in the contract. So, so what we try to be thoughtful about as managers, and there's, there's a board role for policy, then there's departmental work, that departments are doing their good work every day, and in that work, to the extent those decisions impinge upon wages, hours, and working conditions, it's a term of art in the labor law arena, those are the things that we negotiate. Either, either by, by law, it's a decision that we have to bargain, there, those are few and far between, or there's a decision made by the department that has an impact that has to be bargained. So in special education, what we see is we have a, for example, right now, a series of ratios in the contract. How they came to be, I wasn't here when that happened, but I can assume behind that, there was some angst over staffing, and that angst over staffing brought itself to the collective bargaining, the negotiations table, and then to the bargaining table. And in that, the, the team at that time decided to put some ratios in the contract. So now we have some interesting conversations to be dealing with, because ratios are static. They don't move with their kids. They're not flexible. So when we think about what we put in collective bargaining agreement, we have to think about, how do we get the needed flexibility and programmatic changes? So that's kind of a mini example of how we try to navigate what goes into a contract and what doesn't go into a contract. And while you wanna be absolutely thoughtful and supportive of our educators and our classified staff or what we put in a contract, at the same time, we need the flexibility to shift programs as our kids' needs change. So when we come back to what are our kids' needs, what are our students' needs, that gives us the common interest, shared interest with our SCA partners, to re-ask the questions about, do these ratios make sense? Is this the kind of thing that should be in the agreement, or should we begin to tweak it or change it because of program, program differentiation? So that's kind of a wonkier answer to your wonky question.
Love it. Thank you.
Cool.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Pinkham?
Well, I just wanna, Director, thank you for all the staff and the SCA and their team that worked on this, and that they were able to come to an agreement, even though it's just one year, but it keeps our kids in school and we keep on moving forward. So I just appreciate the efforts and, yeah, yeah, applause to you.
Thank you. And thank you so much for your support. You've been so awesome during this entire process. So without your leadership and your passion and your commitment, and for all the sessions that we've had and working through this, it was just such a joy to be able to come back to the bargaining table and say, "Your board supports you." And that message was, was mentioned at almost every meeting, so they know that you supported them, and that made a big difference. So we thank you for your support.
Director Geary?
And I wanna highlight as well, 'cause there was a comment about this not necessarily having been run through the race and equity tool, but I know from our many conversations and knowing that it was the shared interest around equity that everybody in those meetings, that was the commonality, and I think it kept people really focused on what was going to create the best environments possible for the students that we are serving. And I just wanted to highlight that and thank you and everybody for keeping that in their hearts, because I think it did allow us to get where we are when so many districts went through a much rougher patch. So thank you so much for your leadership-
Thank you.
-and the interest-based bargaining that you helped us through. Thank you to all the staff.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And we'll see everyone in Olympia during the legislative session. Next up, number two.
Should we, do we have to vote on that?
Excuse me? Oh, for Lord's-
You might wanna approve that one.
Trifecta. Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, now we're to intro. Number one. Amending policy number five-zero-five-zero, Staff Contracts. This came before Executive Committee September thirteenth for approval. Approval of this item would amend Board Policy number five-zero-five-zero, Staff Contracts, to change how contracts are issued by the district to certificated non-supervisory employees with continuing contract rights under state law. Take it away, Dr. Cod, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Thank you. Good evening. So we're here to inter-
So, we're here to introduce some proposed changes to policy fifty fifty, which does outline how we issue contracts to certificate, well, to all staff. The proposed changes tonight are really with respect to certificated teachers. Currently, our policy states that a certificated teacher has ten days after the issuance of a contract to return that contract to HR. Otherwise, failure to return that contract within that ten-day period shall constitute a resignation or non-acceptance of employment. That's what our current policy says. The proposed change is, is basically saying that HR will still issue contracts on a yearly basis to certificated employees. We will ask them to sign and return that contract once they become a teacher in continuing status, however. We will then assume from that point forward that they are returning the following year unless they resign in writing. And we will make that assumption after fourteen days of the issuance of the contract. So, for provisional employees, which are those we are not tenured yet, if you will, we will still issue yearly contracts. We will still ask them to sign and return because there are different state laws that govern provisional teachers versus continuing contract teachers. But we would like to ask the board to consider this proposed change. We've been working really hard in HR to be more efficient and use our time wisely to support our goals. This change, along with other process improvements in the issuance of contracts, will save HR about a hundred and sixty hours' worth of work, which is one full month's worth of work that staff are engaged in just around this process. So, with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack.
Again, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just a little confused. So, they get the original contract, and then it continues unless they... What is the intersection at the end of the year? Do they just send an email? I mean, how do they?
So...
I'm just having a confusing moment.
You mean right now or how it will work in the future?
How it will work in the future.
Okay. So, in your first three years, you're a provisional contracted teacher. We will still issue and collect contracts each year that you're a provisional teacher. In your fourth year, you become a continuing contract teacher or tenured, if you will. In that fourth year, we will issue a contract. We will also in there, let them know that the, the contract is essentially renewed each year thereafter unless, for some reason, the superintendent under RCW terminates that contract. So, we're making an assumption that from this point forward, you're a continuing status teacher. We, we assume your, your contract annually renews because it does under state law anyways, unless we terminate or unless you resign. So, it's the flip side of what's actually in the, the policy right now.
Great. Thank you.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none? Thank you ever... Oh, I'm sorry. I did not see you, sir. Please.
I think, I just want to highlight how important this is as, when we're looking at things for our students or our educators or our parents, the distinction between basically an opt-in choice versus an opt-out choice. And it feels really subtle, but it can have a huge impact in terms of workload or also in terms of our equity commitment.
Going once, twice, three times. Thank you very much, Dr. Cod. Okay, here's the tricky one. Number two. Adopting Resolution number two thousand eighteen nineteen dash four to declare support for Initiative Measure Number sixteen thirty-nine. Initiative sixteen thirty-nine concerns firearms. This came before Executive Committee September thirteenth for approval. Approval of this item would adopt Resolution two thousand eighteen nineteen dash four, which declares support for Initiative sixteen thirty-nine, which would require increased background checks, training, age limitations, and waiting periods for sales or delivery of semi-automatic assault rifles, criminalize non-compliance storage upon unauthorized use, allow fees, and enact other provisions. We are required by state law to provide the public an opportunity to express an opposing view to the proposed Resolution two thousand eighteen nineteen dash four regarding Initiative sixteen thirty-nine. We will be timing board member comments on this item. And then, as noted earlier, we will be taking public testimony opposing Resolution Number two thousand eighteen nineteen dash four. Director Mack and I, as sponsors, will each have two minutes to speak to this item. Thereafter, each other director will be provided one minute for their comments. We will then offer members of the public who signed up to speak in opposition to this item an opportunity to speak. Please note, the testimony time will be limited, and not all members of the public who sign up are guaranteed an opportunity to speak. Director Mack, two minutes. And we will have cards giving you a thirty-second warning. Madam?
So, again, yesterday in Alabama, a second grader shot another second grader in school. A pistol was brought to school, and it's an accident. But we can do better. Our student safety in Seattle Public Schools is our greatest responsibility. Our students need to be focused on their learning and not worrying about active shooters or accidental shootings. We, as a board, resolved in February to support legislation around gun safety and enacting gun safety measures. This action today, or not today, but this action would solidify and clarify the specific support of a specific initiative and reaffirm this commitment to fighting for our school's safety. And I wholeheartedly believe that the time to act is now to enact laws to keep our children safe.
Thank you. Director Mack. We require training for the use of automobiles. We require insurance. We require certain fundamental responsibilities that go with rights. Selling automatic weapons, semi-automatic weapons, when we already know we have a public health emergency. And when too many children and students have died, for us not to come forward and to lend whatever probity that we can to keep our children safe would be a mistake. Now, there are those that will suggest that the Seattle Public School Board of Directors have no business doing this. Don't get involved in the Second Amendment. Stay in your lane. Oh, my goodness. The Seattle City Council passed resolutions against the circus animals. This, this is so fundamentally more important. This is about keeping our fifty-four thousand students safe and putting some accountability on the responsibility of owning firearms. And I hope that my colleagues will pass this resolution. It's important. Thank you. Other directors have one minute apiece. We are keeping track of the time so that if anyone wants to speak in opposition to this, we are golden. Other directors wish to speak? Director Burke.
I, I just want to thank my colleagues for their leadership in this. I think it is relevant to what we do. I think it is critically important. And I look forward to supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Director Burke. Director DeWolff?
Yes. Thank you, President Harris. Thank you again for bringing this to our attention. Certainly, looking forward to an opportunity to really clarify our values. My only concern about our work here is that we didn't present any whereas that highlights, or at least elucidates, the, the impact that gun violence has particularly on students and communities of color, as well as domestic violence situations and how gun violence has an impact there. And understand, we can't make maybe room for all those things, but particularly, I think it's important particularly with our, saying particularly a lot, with our policy around zeros or through zero that we're making mention that gun violence does impact communities of color at a higher rate, particularly for queer and trans people of color.
Thank you. Director Mack, it's inappropriate in this forum for you to respond. You had your two minutes. Director Pinkham.
Yeah, I just want to, again, thank you. And when you look at the, just the ownership of the right to own and possess, you know, firearms and, you know, one that was originally rented now, you know, semi-automatic, which this is what I see in addressing, is something that we need to definitely help make sure that it doesn't get into the wrong hands. And what I see this more is that it's going to get into the right hands, that the people will be trained. We're asking them to go through these background checks so that it will get into the right hands. We're not going to see us taking away from someone, but we just want to make sure that you're trained and ready and capable of handling these kind of weapons. And as I think about, you know, you know, I don't own a semi-automatic weapon, but I do own rifles. And, but that's more for hunting. Would I go and do hunting and stuff like that? But the semi-automatic, yeah, there's, there's got to be some way that we can make sure that these are going to people that are ready. I have twenty seconds, but thank you.
No, you don't. Other directors? Okay. Superintendent Juno, did you want to weigh in on this?
Thank you.
You betcha.
I know we did talk a little bit about this in Exec Committee, and so, I just wanted to bring those same concerns I have forward. And I am not in opposition to the content of this initiative. I do think it's important to, for have conversations around safety in school. But I would, would like to raise just a couple of concerns with adoption of resolutions supporting political stands and issues. And basically, you know, I know a lot of our stuff goes through community engagement, and there's a mandate basically from the board that that happen, and engagement and conversation that happen. And so, that, to me, sort of like, I don't know what the community engagement on board decision-making's been on this resolution. I don't know how community and families, how you know that they want the board to support this resolution and this initiative. And the board and SPS cannot even directly advocate passage of our own levy. We can educate, and we can do some of those things, but we can't even actually write a resolution to support our own levy. And so, I guess my, I just have a concern about which issues, which initiatives get supported, how it work, ties to our work, and how the community gets a say in which initiatives you support as this goes forward. And again, I'm not opposed to the content. I'm just have a couple of concerns about process and just want to make sure we highlight those. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. General Counsel, what is the time standard for folks that wish to testify against this? And how many folks have signed up so that we can do our division?
Good evening.
And stick with RCW forty-two point one seven eight point five five five?
Good evening. Noel Tree, General Counsel. We didn't have anyone sign up to speak in opposition. So, what you may want to do at this juncture is just invite, if there is anyone in the audience that wants to do that. There was five and a half minutes of comments made in support of the resolution. So, to provide the equal opportunity.
Would anyone in the audience like to testify in opposition to this resolution? No, sir. It cannot be in support in order for us to stay with our statute. RCW four, forty-two point seventeen A five five five, where we have to give equal time. Going once, going twice, three times. We move on to number three. Approval of State of Washington Grant for High Poverty High and Middle School International Baccalaureate Programs. This came before A and F September tenth for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize a superintendent to accept the International Baccalaureate High Poverty Schools grant and the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for Reiner Beach High School. I see Dr. Kenosha at the podium.
Yeah. Good evening. Kyle Kenosha, Chief of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, presenting this on behalf of Reiner Beach and Dr. Caleb Perkins, who did the work on this. Just a very brief explanation. This is for a continuation of a third year of a grant that Reiner Beach has had for two years already. The original grant was developed by the legislature to support schools greater than seventy percent free and reduced lunch, who also had an international baccalaureate program. In the past two years, the grants were a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As this year, two thousand eighteen nineteen, Reiner Beach was the only school in the state that actually qualified for this grant. The amount was upped to three hundred thousand, thus requiring board approval for acceptance. The grant will allow for continuation of the IB program. It supports parts of its staffing in order, in order to maintain the rigor of the program. And it will also allow work to continue to align the curriculum of the feeder middle schools, South Shore and Aki Karose, so that students who are entering Reiner Beach will be more prepared to take IB classes. I should take note of the fact that the grant is not in order to create an IB program in the middle schools. It is mainly to support the work with the teachers at these schools for curriculum alignment. So, I'll stop for any questions. If any questions that I can't answer, I'll take back to Dr. Perkins or Reiner Beach.
Comments, questions, concerns from the dais, my colleagues? Director Burke, please.
With, within this grant, does the funding all, is it all delivered to Reiner Beach? Or does some of it flow to the feeder schools through the work they're doing together?
Well, it does, it is awarded to Reiner Beach, and Reiner Beach is responsible for organizing the work with the middle schools in order to work with those teachers in order to align their curriculum. So, it goes straight to Reiner Beach, and they organize the work with the middle schools.
Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Pinkham.
And just, again, public comment. What was the complexity of these documents that was preventing it from being posted for access?
That, I am not sure. I could find the answer to that. Are you speaking, being posted for consideration by the?
Well, again, just any of our documents. I know it's a challenge when we go with things online, and we got to make sure that, you know, PDF documents, sometimes we can't post it because it can't be interpreted, either because of quality. So, I just wonder what was it, what was the complexity of the documents that prevented them from being posted online?
Mm-hmm. I can find the answer to that.
Yeah, so that we can, again, have that equal access. And kind of funny what our commenter said, that is almost similar to like, okay, ADA. Well, then, since we don't have ADA access, no one can have access then. That's, that's the equality. Everyone...
I respectfully would take issue with that kind, sir.
Yeah. But as far as making sure that we do have these things accessible?
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? I have some that won't surprise anyone. Sustainability and how we fund our international baccalaureate schools is terribly important. And whether or not they are a high priority for schools with a high free and reduced lunch poverty rate. As you know, Chief South, International High School, a school I have a great deal of familiarity with, after having a child go through that program. We, we need to take a very candid look at what programs we offer, how expensive they are, and build into our budget and not look to the future with chewing gum and Band-Aids when we need line items that are, that are robust. And where we get that money, I don't know. And Assistant Superintendent Bergy will tell me, if you put it at IB, you're taking it away from somewhere else. But we are an international city. We brag about this program, but I would suggest that we need more attention to it. There you go. Number four. Alliance for Education Subgrant for the Whole Child, Whole Day Initiative came before Audit and Finance September tenth for?
For approval, as were items five and six.
Thank you, sir. Approval of this item would authorize a superintendent to accept the Alliance for Education Subgrant of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the Whole Child, Whole Day Initiative. I see Assistant Superintendent Brent Jones at the podium.
Good afternoon, Brent Jones, Chief of Strategy and Partnerships. This Alliance Subgrant for the Whole Child, Whole Day Initiative is part of our efforts to find additional funding. funding to fund our priorities. This lines up precisely with policy 0030, Superintendent Smart Goal, MTSS, and Superintendent Smart Goal, the EOG Smart Goal. Particularly, this is number two, year number two.
Is that Superintendent Smart Goal or?
Superintendent Smart Goal.
Smart Goal.
So two Smart Goals. The first Smart Goal is MTSS. The second Smart Goal is EOG.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that the board approved those.
That's correct. And so this, this effort.
So the reference to Superintendent, help me out here, because I'm floundering, obviously.
No problem. So this effort is to support those two Smart Goals. So we, we have these embedded in the effort to actualize MTSS and also the, the effort to actualize the EOG Smart Goal.
Okay.
Okay. So this is year number two, and we've had some really good success going forward. And this is also, I note that this is supplemented by the KC Family Program. So they, they've also supplemented this effort. This grant allows us to continue what we're calling Tier Two Care Coordinators. And 200, over 220 students are served by this in seven schools. And my colleague, YF Jesse, can give you any details about how this manifests. And we are really happy to have this, this grant from the Alliance for Education, and we're looking for your approval today, or your approval next time we're together.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack, and then Director DeWolff.
First off, I want to say I'm highly, highly supportive and appreciative that dollars are coming in to support needed, needed services that we have. I also really appreciate that the MTSS model is demonstrating that we can identify where the needs really are and put budget dollars towards that. And I've been a skeptic in the past, so this, this is a place where I really appreciate seeing it play out. I do also want to point out, though, that this is essentially backfilling the family support workers that previously were funded through the City of Seattle's levy, that no longer are, and was cut from that program. So, and that this is another non-sustainable funding source for, you know, it's a year out, and then we're going to have to go out for another year. So I would really love to be able to have a, a commitment to these services that we know are needed ongoing with dollars, that we don't have to go put our hand out every year to foundations for. And that I just want to say is one of the things I don't like about this. But I really support it, and thank you for handing us the dollars now.
Director DeWolff.
Thank you. Just want to first say thank you to the Alliance for Education for the partnership and working with us again in this capacity. My first question is, does this, can you tether this back to the African-American Male Advisory recommendations? Does this, does this meet one of those recommendations as well as part of their goals? And just seeing maybe if there's some alignment or connection to the African-American Male Advisory Committee?
Sure. One of the recommendations from the African-American Male Advisory Committee was in, around attendance. And so this particular effort started with a, an effort to improve school climate, and we believe the improvement in school climate will also impact positively attendance. So one of the recommendations from the African-American Male Advisory Committee is, is a, is a robust dialogue about how we want to make sure that we're focusing on attendance. So this Whole Child, Whole School Initiative and the Tier Two Coordination, one of the, the metrics that we measure around our effectiveness is improved attendance.
And then the only other comment, I just want to maybe have a little bit of disagreement with Director Mack, is that I'm really grateful, even if it is a year, I think particularly as a native student when I was in public schools, we had a couple of programs that felt intermittent, if I would have maybe had a balcony level view. But as a student, was really grateful for even just, you know, that one day of being able to connect with my community through cultural activities and after-school things. So just thank you for finding this. Obviously, it sucks about our work that sometimes these things aren't sustainable, but I'm really looking forward to, to working with you and the African-American Male Advisory Committee to think about other ways to increase resources. So thank you for your work, Brent.
Yes, thank you.
Director Geary?
I too, I too want to thank the Alliance for Education and thank our board. It's, because I think it is the process of going through and creating the goals that make it clear as to how our partners can join with us and how we can identify common goals, and we don't run into misunderstandings or misdirection around how the money's going to come into our district. So I think, once again, it is, it is that back and forth around the priorities that we share as a city that make this possible. And that, as long as we keep that type of conversation and collaboration going, we should be able to continue to find the resources in our resource, resource wealthy city. And so I'm not so worried about the sustainability as long as we honor the process of listening and creating goals that are important. So thank you so much for being part of that process, and thank you for the money.
Go ahead, Director Burke.
I would also like to, to thank the Alliance and staff for the collaboration, the work on this, and the donors that have helped make this happen. And I want to be really, really blatant and explicit that for anybody who might have concerns around whether this is driving our work, or if our work is driving this, that, that this is really a collaborative process, and that we've, we've created sort of a revolution that I think is getting people on board with their hearts, their minds, and, you know, their, their philanthropic focus. So I think that's really wonderful. Around the sustainability, I take a little bit more nuanced approach. I see this as a change initiative, and I see a change initiative as an investment, which is a, requires a slug of money to create a change. And if we do our change initiatives properly, we should be designing them so that they roll into baseline, so that we have a one-year, a two-year, a three-year investment with an intentional process to, to make it a sustainable thing. And I, I think that that's something that I've heard in, in some of the conversations. So I appreciate that as well.
That's a terrific tee-up. And I'm going to take a chair's privilege here, and I'm going to ask the folks in the audience from the Alliance to come up and introduce themselves, please. Yeah, you too.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. We're happy to support this program. I'm Lisa Chick. I'm the president and CEO of the Alliance for Education.
My name's Lydia Bassett, and I'm the Director of Development at the Alliance for Education. Thank you.
And we have a fractious history with the Alliance for Education, and I'm ever so pleased that we are rebuilding that history with, with real clarity and with real, what's the word I want to say, elegance? And we thank you for your work. And I'm sorry, we didn't bring you up under the teacher's residency when we passed that. Thanks for that as well. Okay. Number five, New England Center for Children, New England Center for Children Contract.
It sounded like you almost said chowder. Did you almost say chowder?
I did not. Hey, I can screw it up myself. I don't need help. This came before audit and finance September 10th for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize a superintendent to execute a contract with New England Center for Children in the total amount of $401,031.49 for residential special education program serving a student in the form of the draft contract dated September 1, 2018, and attached to the School Board Action Report, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. And I would caution my colleagues that because of FERPA, we want to be very elegant here. Questions, comments, concerns? And Mr., excuse me, Chief Jesse, would you dial it up, please?
Yes. Good evening, YF Jesse, Chief of Student Support Services. Today, again, moving this forward for hopefully action and approval of a contract with what we call NAC, New England Center for Children. Again, this, this contract is for to meet the needs of the services as listed on a student's IEP.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? This is a federal mandate, is it not, Chief Jesse?
Well, yes, it's not only, yes, federal mandate, and to explicitly meet the needs of a, of a particular student.
Thank you. And number six is similarly elegant. Brox Academy Contracts came before audit and finance September 10th for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize a superintendent to execute contracts, plural, with Brox Academy totaling $556,875 for a highly specialized, one-on-one tutoring special education program serving students, plural, in the form of the draft contracts attached to the School Board Action Report, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contracts. Chief Jesse, can you tee this one up, please?
Yes, this, like other service providers, this one is to meet the unique needs of students. And as the services are listed on the IP, the IB team has indicated that these services are needed. There are very few service providers able to provide those services. Brox Academy is one of those, and those are for services for a handful of students.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Chief Jesse, a couple of years ago, I recall that we were entering into some contracts, and folks had significant philosophical differences in terms of restraint and philosophies, if you will. We don't have any of those issues in items number five and six, do we?
On, NAC is a different, is an all-around different service for different needs. I wouldn't want to get into too much of the details on that, but that would be in compliance with, you know, they're out of state. We do actually send staff there to review the services and the quality, and obviously, the parents are involved as well, so they feel, feel well about that placement. Brox, similarly, offers such unique one-on-one services, escalation is very, becomes a lot rarer. That's why those are those unique services, to decrease the number of triggers. And again, our staff go out to see the services. IB team is involved in review of those services as well. And they would be mandated by state to report anything if there was.
Thank you. Did you have a question, comment, concern, Director Pinkham?
Yeah, when this was discussed in committee, one issue I was asking about, because we had two contracts here, but the description in the first one kind of alludes to something that should apply also to the second one. And again, I was kind of getting clarification and reading for, again, description on the first one, description of service is an expected objective. The first sentence reads, "Teaching and parent educator for each student as well as monthly progress reports." That statement is not included in the second contract. And I wanted to clarify, does that apply to the second contract as well?
And General Counsel, are you reviewing same, sir?
These are separate, yeah, so, these are separate contracts because we have separate issues with students. So the services that are, are listed there are different because they're for different needs for different students. Some students don't have, they're not going to have, it's not cookie cutter. We've had these conversations before, sorry, that some of the services, some will get a parent educator, some will just be a teacher, some hours. That's why those, those are listed. As far as the progress report, that was something probably very unique for the student, different than the other student.
Yeah, just that when it said for each student, that's what really kind of got that, made it popped out for me. So it almost sounds like this is also applying to the other one versus saying it, teaching and parent education for student two as well as month progress, but it says for each.
Yeah, again, the IEP's going to be the one that's going to be the driver of that. So we're going to have to meet the requirements, and progress reports are part of IEPs.
I just want to make sure that the, that that language wasn't an error, that, that's typical language that's used.
Okay. Seeing no further comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues, we move to number seven. Amending Board Policy Number 6882, Rental, Lease, and Sale of Real Properties and repealing Board Policy and Procedure H02.00, H02.01, Closed Facilities, came before Ops August 22nd for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would amend Board Policy Number 6882, Rental, Lease, and Sale of Real Property, as attached to this Board Action Report, and repeal Board Policy and Procedure H02.00 and H02.01, comma, Closed Facilities. Associate Superintendent Dr. Flip Herndon, take it away.
Indeed. So as was outlined in this particular background information, this is a very minor cleanup issue. There were two parts of the policy that stated different lengths of time. One was five years, one was 10 years on the leasing timeframe. This pulls it all into alignment for five years and eliminates the H policy. Again, it's part of the process of eliminating some of the lettered policies and getting us all into numbers.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack?
Yeah, I just want to underline, underscore that this really is just a cleanup situation where the previous eight letter policies didn't get repealed, but all the content got thrown into the new numbered policy. And so really, the only change is that five-year edit. So it's really, really minor change. It's not change, it's not fundamentally changing our policy whatsoever. It's actually just cleaning up our documents.
Director Pinkham, did you have a comment, question, concern? Seeing none. Number eight, Bex Four, Resolution 2018-19-1. Acceptance of the Building Commissioning Report for the Arbor Heights Elementary School Replacement Project came before Ops September 6th for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would accept the Building Commissioning Report for the Arbor Heights Elementary School Replacement Project in accordance with Washington Administrative Code 392-344-165, as required to complete the Office of Superintendent Public Instruction, OSPI Form D11, Application to Release Retainage. Take it away, Dr. Herndon.
As you have seen some of these reports before, typical process that we do in the attaining the completion of D forms from OSPI, this commissioning report, and this one is specific to Arbor Heights. So if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Director Mack?
No questions specific to this. I just want to point out for folks' reference that we now have as part of the work plan, the committee work plan, a document that helps lay out how projects move through the bar, bar process and what, where they're at in the timeline, because there are six or seven steps, eight, I don't know. There's a lot of steps that each project has to go through for board approval, rightly so. But, you know, we touch it a number of times. And so in order to help our process and stay on top of which projects are where in the process, we have a document helping us track that in committee, and it is a public part of the, the work plan. Just want everybody to know that.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Number nine, BTA and Bex, Resolution Number 2018-19-3, Signatures of Authorized District Personnel for State. This came before Ops September 6th for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would adopt Resolution Number 2018-19-3, Authorizing Denise Juno, Superintendent, Stephen Nielsen, Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Lester Herndon, Associate Superintendent of Facilities and Operations, and Richard Best, Director of Capital Projects and Planning, to sign state funding assistant documents pursuant to Washington Administrative Code 392-344-120. Background on this, reasoning for same?
This is an, this is a piece that we have to renew annually, and it just allows us to be able to sign the actual documents. Most of the time, obviously, if there was a dollar amount that was over $250,000, that'd come to the board. And so you would, these aren't any documents that wouldn't be known by the board.
You said most of the time. Help me out with that one, because that makes me nervous, pal.
Yeah, I can't. Yeah, I can't, I can't imagine, I don't recall any of these documents coming under that would be under $250,000. These are all pretty major projects.
Fair enough. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, thank you ever so mu... Ah, excuse me, you gotta wait. Director Burke, please.
Is, is the impetus for doing this adding a new name, face, and signature? Or the, the other three that are on this, were they pre-existing from previous?
Yeah, I think it's twofold. One is, I think they want to make sure it's the same people in the same spot, and obviously we're adding Superintendent Juno.
Thank you.
Now, the board will be retiring to executive session. This session will begin at the conclusion of this meeting, and last approximately 30 minutes. We will reconvene to close out the meeting, walking through here. If we go over 30 minutes, we will come back in and extend this session. Thank you so much. General Counsel Treat?
Yes.
Are you there to correct me?
Yeah, I just to note...
Alrighty.
We, we're required to note for the record the purpose of the executive session, so tonight's discussion involves potential litigation.
Thank you, sir.[1652.54]